Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order the Monday, June 17th, 2019 Planning Commission. Mrs. Ruzi, can I get a rule?
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Eads?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Thank you. And Mr. Krasner and Mr. Rankin are absent.
All right. Can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
That's my favorite thing to do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All rights unanimous. The first item is a speaker series. Mr. John Hicks is going to be presenting to us on the Managing the Mobility Revolution: Policy Framework for Dockless Mobility.
It's been a long title.
Long title.
Yeah, the microphone. You can have a seat there and be comfortable.
Now, I have slides that were provided. Are they going to go up here or you're just going to riff?
Yes.
Do you have your flashlight?
I do not.
You do not? Okay. I think you have one.
No. No, I only have one.
Though I suspect the camera wouldn't capture these, right?
I found it.
It's not tied in, right, to the camera?
I have a backup one.
Yeah.
But the camera's not showing, right? It won't.
Oh, the camera itself.
It's okay. Just so when you reference something, we have lots of fans.
That's right.
So if you just are more specific.
Millions of hits on YouTube.
Oh, really? That's good, though.
Just know that they won't be able to see what you're presenting.
I was sitting down in my car and I need Tom.
You really don't have to worry. Be that way.
I'll just tell you next slide.
We really don't have fans. Gordon loves them.
Okay.
Gordon loves them. They're in all the cars.
I'll just briefly introduce myself. My name's John Hicks. I'm a recent graduate of the Master's in Urban and Regional Planning Program in Virginia Tech and Alexandria campus. It's actually moving to Arlington now, but when I was there, it was in Alexandria. I work full-time for a noblesse as a government contractor to the U.S. Department of Transportation, working on various research programs with them: multimodal, smart cities, accessible transportation for people with disabilities, and technology research programs for DOT. And thank you again for having me.
Thank you for coming.
This is part of my capstone project that I finished up in May. So it's continuing into June now.
Do we need to sign you off?
That's right. Well, I've already graduated, so I'm set free. But I think we can go ahead and jump in on the next slide, please. So as far as some background, I think we're all somewhat familiar. In the past year and a half, dockless bikes, e-bikes, and e-scooters have launched on city streets around the country. I think it's a combination of some enabling technologies and various pain points that cities are facing with congestion and parking and pollution problems, and also customer demands for accessibility and convenience, as well as some venture capital, which is really creating this ripe environment for some of these services. And so in contrast to conventional bike-sharing systems, Dockless does not offer typically membership options or physical docking stations. So riders can find devices, pay for them, and unlock the device, all within the company's mobile application. And at the end of the trip, they can be conveniently left anywhere within the public right-of-way, as long as it doesn't obstruct the right-of-way. So there is an added convenience factor to Dockless, but also it introduces a host of regulatory challenges for cities. And so cities have been really experimenting with them, to understand the market, the operators, the demand for them, and how they should approach regulations. Next slide. So the purpose of my project was to look at, because the private sector has essentially moved a lot faster than cities can respond with regulations, my approach was to conduct a state-of-the-practice scan of cities engaged in these pilot programs, and from there develop in-depth case studies and to evaluate four cities from across the country. And with those four cities, I conducted interviews with city staff to document lessons learned, challenges, and opportunities moving forward. Next slide, please. So based on that state-of-the-practice scan of like three dozen cities, I identified these three focus areas. There's a million different areas you could focus on, but I had to pick some. So parking and right-of-way is a big one, equity, as well as institutional and policy barriers facing cities. So those are my three focus areas for the paper. Next slide. So then, based on those three focus areas, you know the key questions. What are the main concerns for cities regarding parking? What are the best practices for ensuring equity? And then what were the institutional and policy barriers? Next slide, please. Just a quick word on methods. So the case studies were Santa Monica, California, Kansas City, Dallas, and Washington, D.C. I did one-hour interviews. This took place in December and January of December 2018, January 2019. So just a quick, some things have changed since I wrote the paper. It's a very fast-moving market. And then I also did two additional special-topic interviews with Louisville, Kentucky, and Raleigh, North Carolina, that were recommended from those four case studies: Louisville for data policy and Raleigh for some institutional challenges. Next slide, please. So to jump into some of the results, so the first focus area is parking and right-of-way. This is probably the biggest area of complaints for cities that they get in terms of street clutter and devices blocking the right-of-way. I think everyone here has probably been walking on the street and seen a poorly parked device at some point. All the cities that I looked at had some sort of language requiring, had the ADA five-foot clearance zone for people with disabilities, people with strollers, so they can easily pass a device. And they also required or urged people to park in the furniture zone, which is that zone between the curb and the main walkway where amenities are usually placed, where they recommended the devices to be parked. Some cities, so D.C. has implemented what's called a lock-to requirement. So all dockless bikes in D.C. must be locked to a piece of public infrastructure, such as a public bike rack or some sort of signpost. There is no requirement for scooters, but bikes do have to be locked to. The lock-to does limit the original convenience of Dockless, because it's essentially no longer Dockless. And it also increases demand for public bike racks, for private bike riders on their own bikes. So they've taken an all-of-the-above approach. They've increased bike racks across D.C. as expanding parking facilities for all bikers, whether it's public or private. Santa Monica was one of the first cities to develop designated parking zones, which we've seen spread to Arlington, has them now as well. They have in-street corrals and also on-sidewalk corrals. So they not only try to keep devices out of the right-of-way, but it also provides companies a place where they can rebalance them every morning, and also gives people in an area where they can maybe look for one in the morning, where they know they can find a scooter there in the morning. In terms of, some cities are pushing companies to develop incentive and disincentive mechanisms, perhaps like an extra fee if you park outside of a designated parking zone. Kansas City, for example, in their RFP, they included language, asking applicants to propose a strategy that may include some of these incentives and disincentives. This area is kind of a should and not a must yet, but it's something where cities are trying to push companies to head in that direction. Another challenge is fleet-size caps. So again, so if an oversupply of devices, you get that obstruction issue, you get street clutter and things like that, whereas an undersupply kind of hinders the business models of the companies from working. So there's two approaches. So Dallas took a very hands-off approach and didn't have any limits at first, and so they had 20,000 bikes flood into the city. As you can imagine, there was a very intense public backlash to that. Other cities, so D.C. has adopted performance-based caps. So they've set an arbitrary initial cap of 600 devices per company, and then quarterly they evaluate the companies based on a set of established performance measures, and if they meet those measures, then they can increase up to 25% per quarter. Just in terms of parking, I think it's important to look at the big picture in terms of parking and micro-mobility. I think it's more than just a new technology or just a new mode of transportation, but I think it provides an opportunity to encourage and really build a constituency for all forms of active transportation, regardless of its shared or private. And really, you can start to shift the streetscape design away from cars and towards some of these alternative modes. Next slide, please. So in terms of equity, there's numerous equity considerations. There's geographic distributional equity, and there's also equity for low-income folks and people without smartphones. Of all the case study cities, Dallas was actually the only one not to regulate distributional equity. They did say they were looking at that when they revised their ordinance this year. But D.C., for example, they require six devices in each ward by 6:00 a.m. each day. Santa Monica only allows up to a third of a fleet within the city center. It has to be distributed other places. And Kansas City integrated with the LifeX program, which is an existing program that focuses on 20 ZIP codes with lower life expectancy. A certain number of devices have to be within those ZIP codes. Kansas City and D.C. also have language requiring cash and non-smartphone payment options, as well as discounted low-income payment plans. Some companies have also started, so Jump has what's called the Boost Plan, and Lime has the Lime Access Plan, which gives low-income users deeply discounted membership or per-ride rates if they can prove they're on some, if they can prove their low-income status, they're on food stamps, something like that. Lime also has what's called Pay Near Me, which is an existing platform, which has been used in the past for people to use cash to pay for utility bills and things like that, and it's also been used for scooters now. So basically, you can go to any convenience store, pay with cash or a credit card if you have one, to add money to the account, and then you can unlock a device via text, or if you have a phone, via the mobile app. I think equity has received somewhat less media attention. I think the public backlash is, the parking has sucked a lot of the energy out of the room, but I think cities and the public sector have an opportunity to use their leverage and their policy levers to really guide this emerging business models and really push them to better serve all travelers. Next slide. And then finally, in terms of institutional barriers, cities really had to be nimble a lot of times. So the scooters really arrived in the middle of a lot of cities' bike pilots, so they really had to adjust on the fly. And because it's evolving so quickly, most cities have opted to establish some sort of open permit system or some sort of interim agreement with companies to establish some sort of initial regulations and evaluate how it works. So this approach allows you to welcome competition among the companies and evaluate the impacts, and then eventually, down the road, refine the permit process and maybe follow more formal rule-making processes. Most cities follow that approach, running a pilot based on administrative regulations. Dallas took a somewhat different route, so they actually wrote an ordinance upfront. And the problem with that was that they can only update it every six months. That's very slow, and the process to update the ordinance is cumbersome. And in six months, in terms of the micro-mobility market, a lot can change. So they found themselves somewhat lagging behind a little bit. All the cities talked a lot about the importance of building channels of communication and forming new relationships with offices within the city that may not have worked together ever before, but will now. Santa Monica, they talked a lot about working every day with the city attorney, which they did not have a relationship beforehand, but now they do.
That's funny.
And they emphasized the need to define roles and responsibilities upfront. Everyone has full-time jobs now before micro-mobility, and so it all is added to their plates when it came in. So it's really important to be as efficient as possible with what staff you have, and really putting up a united front when talking to companies. There were issues with companies calling the city and talking to different people within the city to leverage the city against itself. So you really want to have that communication strong upfront. And there's also interregional communication. We see a lot of inconsistencies, for example, between Arlington and D.C. or Santa Monica and L.A. in terms of where you can ride, where you can park, and then how the devices are regulated. So that can be confusing for riders when they're going in between jurisdictions, so there definitely needs to be some communication there. And then finally, so data is a critical issue. Cities need the data for transportation planning. The companies argue that providing data at a certain granular level jeopardizes customer privacy concerns and opens them up to FOIA, FOIA problems as well. So the key is allowing cities useful data while also protecting privacy. One solution that's emerged is using third parties, such as universities or organizations like Shared Streets, that could help alleviate some of those concerns. L.A. DOT and Los Angeles, they've developed what's called the NDS, or Mobility Data specification. It's quickly spreading across other cities, but it's basically a consistent specification for companies to provide data. So it's good for both sides. So if companies don't have to provide 200 different types of data to 200 different cities, they can provide one set in a consistent format. What I do think cities can do better is articulating what data they need upfront. I think sometimes they don't know what they need, and so they just ask for everything, which may not be as successful. So I think if they came in with a very targeted use case and said, "This is what problem I have in my city, and this is what data set I need to solve that problem, and what data points I need," I think they might have a higher degree of success getting the data they need. Next slide, please. And just to wrap up, so Dockless is really popular. It's really popular among users. It addresses a need, and I think cities are hungry for options that address their pain points. But as with any disruptive technology, there are going to be issues, and there's going to be critics, and issues that business models really have to evolve and have to address. I think while it's a very small number of devices relatively, I think any device blocking the right-of-way is a problem, whether it's incentives now, or drop-off zones, or some combination of the strategies. I think parking remains a priority, and we need to figure it out. But I also think it provides an opportunity for cities to reorganize public space and how they allocate that. And finally, mobility, I think, should be a right, regardless of where you live, whether you own a smartphone. I think companies and cities are largely on the same page in terms of equity, but I do see the public sector playing a key role in making sure it happens in terms of equity. And as I said, there's going to be vocal opponents, but I think in the end, they can help make the services better. I think it's possible to argue for expanded scooter use while also recognizing the occasional user that goes the wrong way on the street or does something stupid. I think those two things can be true at the same time. And then I think disruption calls for a little bit of humility on both sides. I think we've been here with Uber and Lyft before, and I think the good news is that both sides want to avoid the hostile relationship that occurred between cities and the TNCs. And I think cities in turn are better prepared, and companies are willing to work with cities. So I hope we're in a better shape than we were with Uber and Lyft. And the last thing I'll say is that half of all trips in the U.S. are less than three miles, and 75% of those are driven. So I think Dockless Mobility is another choice for those short trips, get people out of cars, and really increase connections to transit and things like that. And it's just one piece of this mobility revolution that we see. It's electric, it's shared, and it's automated, and a lot of these technologies are already transforming how we design our cities. And I think successfully planning for them and adapting to them is a defining challenge for cities for years to come. So, next slide. I think the rest is, I threw in some additional resources. Some of this was part of my lit review. Some of these have come out since I published my paper, so just put them for future reference.
You didn't mention the Virginia deadline.
The Virginia deadline?
For having a policy.
I did not know. The state deadline, or?
Isn't there?
There's a state deadline for localities in Virginia to come up with their own policy.
Or else they'll do it.
Yeah. They're going to come up with an overall policy.
I think it's the end of the year.
Yeah. It is the end of this year. CICT was talking about it last week.
Gotcha.
That's a biggie, of course.
Yep.
Right. So I understand scooter trips in a lot of places are now starting to overtake bike share as far as the trip count goes.
Yep. And there's millions and millions of trips. There's not a lot of data on what trips they're replacing. We do do more of that. My last class at Virginia Tech, we did a survey in Arlington, very small sample size, but we did find that the largest proportion of trips was coming from TNCs, so Uber and Lyft trips was actually what they were replacing the most.
Yeah. My understanding is in Falls Church, obviously somebody can use a scooter, but that our current zoning doesn't allow the companies to make a drop-off of scooters. Is that a very common situation where that's, I mean, it wasn't an act of commission, it was just that happened to be how our zoning ordinances are written?
Yeah. And I think, yes, that's common, and I think sometimes the companies disregard that, and they just drop them.
Right.
Especially in the larger cities.
It'd be a little hard to not notice that here, though.
And we just got bike share, so we're just getting the repercussions of that. But there's a phenomenal, I can't give it to you because I can't get email here, but there's a great article put up by the planning, American Planning APA, about curb uses and the fact that curbs are being realigned to deal with deliveries, Uber, Lyft, scooters, bikes, and everything else, and the fact that parking is very, very momentary in reality compared to two-hour parking. And so there's an awful lot to be done. And it's a fascinating article, just one of the, I glance at those things, but this one was, whoa, a biggie. And it came out in the beginning of June.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, curb-based management is like.
Yeah. And just the fact of rearranging and planning for the curb cuts to be used for different things, and they have it even on a reservation basis for deliveries and things like that, which we have a big trouble with on deliveries with on-broad and everything. But there's a lot of things that need to be changed within our parking regulations and everything, just coming down the pipe really fast.
Well, there's a lot of issues with them. My office isn't far from the campus in Alexandria. I guess you saw the big flashy signs two weeks ago where it said all scooters must be in the street and follow rules like the bikes do.
Yes.
And I noticed after that, there was less scooter use. I saw less people. They don't want to ride their scooters in the street. They want to ride them on sidewalks.
Right.
Yeah.
And just the rules of the road don't seem to matter in different ways of transportation, which we've got to have some sort of a common come-to meeting here about whether stop signs are stop signs, or how it's worked out and everything, and I think that's a problem all over the place.
Well, stop signs are stop signs, but some people don't stop.
No, no, no. I know that. But it's still, I think it's a big problem, and particularly with bikers, we've had the deaths over in D.C., which is terrible. But there's a lot to be changed in their laws and a general understanding how everybody can get along together on different modes of transportation.
Yeah. In terms of where people ride, I would say that people would prefer to ride in a protected bike lane if they could, and they would if it was available. So I think if we want them to ride off the sidewalk, we should build better and safer places for them to do it that's not on the sidewalk.
Yeah. I think that's just a problem sometimes. Like King Street has a problem, and they just don't have room. So they would have to give up parking, and so that's really the moment, like where's the tipping point where you can push them to give up one side of the parking to do that?
And this is where we've been in problems now with the bike share. People just say, "You took our parking spots away." But we're going to have, I guess, a big gathering of information to see, because I go along and count, see how many are being used, but it's something new. Something old to other people, something new to us.
Mr. Fuentes?
You looked at cities. Did you look at transit agencies? Are transit agencies working with micro-mobility companies to approve first mile, last mile?
Yeah, so I only looked at cities. But if you go to the last slide, that was my additional research, is this public-private partnership piece. We actually don't see a lot of transit agencies partnering directly with micro-mobility. We've seen a lot with Uber and Lyft, with providing the discounted rides to and from transit. We haven't seen a lot of it so far with micro-mobility, but I think it's an opportunity there. There is one city that I know of, Monrovia, California. They had a partnership with Lime that's since ended, but they did have some sort of discounted ride to and from. But again, that's certainly not.
To transit stations.
To transit, yep.
Ah.
Yeah. And we see it a lot with Uber and Lyft. I'm not really sure why it hasn't caught on in terms of micro-mobility yet, but maybe that's where it's going. I don't know.
Well, thank you for coming and presenting for us. This is a really hot topic, as you indicated. There's a lot of challenges. I mean, I think the speed at which the technology is coming available and it's being utilized is really at odds with the pace at which government tends to move. As we try to evaluate what people want and the various stakeholders, and collect the data, and be thoughtful about how to approach it, it's outpacing our ability to keep up. And what I feel like we're left with is a policy of nothing. We're just waiting around. Virginia is pushing us as localities to try to make some decisions, but without real understanding of the data and the marketplace. It's so immature, yet it's exploding at some pace. And the market really hasn't settled out. We're so slow as a city, as we just mentioned, we just got standard bicycles in our jurisdiction after three or four years of trying to work through the federal funding. And even the bike, the standard pedal bikes, which have been around for 150 years here, we still haven't sorted that out in terms of our bike lanes and the parking and things like that. As this comes at us at this speed, I think we're going to really be challenged as a city to adapt to what's happening, whether it becomes the curb or losing parking spaces, or I think safety is a major point. I personally, just like four or five months ago, a scooter lost control and hit my car. Just happened to graze the side of it. They just wobbled and crashed into me. No one was hurt, fortunately, but no one's wearing helmets and no one's really obeying limits, sometimes on the sidewalk, sometimes on the street. So I'm really torn about it. I am one of the more vocal people on this Planning Commission about trying to get people out of cars and exchange those trips and use bicycles. I just bought myself an electric bike for these short-duration trips. I really believe in it, but I just think as a city, it's hard to know where to start. It's hard to know where to begin those regulations. It's hard to know who the stakeholders you want to make those arrangements for. On the bicycle side, we said, "All right, Capital Bike Share is a well-established company. They seem to have a system. The technology is forward-thinking, yet we have places to put them." I happen to work in Silver Spring, where they have a lot, Silver Spring, Maryland, where they have a lot of these dockless systems, and it looks really sloppy. It just, right away, is a safety issue. It's an issue for ADA as well, but just visually, it is not an appealing system. The bikes are just left everywhere, and it's unclear to me how they do all the collections and redistribute it throughout the evening, but just during the day, I'm not a fan of it, even though I want people to get out of their cars. So I'm really conflicted about how we manage it as a city. The answer can't be to stick our head in the sand and say, "We're not going to deal with it." This is, the genie's out of the bottle. It's arrived. The technology is here. People want to use it. It makes sense for shorter trips. But I think we're really far behind as localities to handle it. I'm happy to learn about how other people are dealing with it and that. and that there seems to be some real thought and hopefully we can begin to, you know, poach some of those better ideas. But sitting here, living in Falls Church for well over 15 years here, I'm not sure how we go about managing what is a exploding problem for us.
Yeah, I mean, I think your challenges are everyone else's challenges, right? So I think, I mean, there are publications, NACDO has a lot of publications to kind of leverage what folks are doing. What I did hear is, you know, you mentioned the overwhelming part of things. I think it was Kansas City, they mentioned, you know, they too were overwhelmed, but their advice would be, you know, yes, it's overwhelming, but not to retreat from it and not to just throw in the towel and say, "Oh, we're not doing this." Really, you know, push forward and see what, you know, see what best practices you can do for Falls Church.
Are there model codes, especially, you know, the smaller?
Or smaller jurisdictions?
I would check the NACDO publication.
NACDO.
That would be the source. And then the safety, you mentioned the safety piece. There was a recent study from the CDC. That was like pretty much the first real research on safety. It's a really interesting publication.
Yeah, to retreat would be a huge mistake, but it's, to me, it's where to start, you know, whether it's just, it's just, if we start as something as simple as we need to enforce the rules of the road.
Yeah, I would like that.
That could be the beginning and then say, you know, here's where you need to place parking. Maybe it's still dockless, but there needs to be a repository where you can find these things. I actually haven't used the scooters and I don't really, so I haven't been on those applications. When you want a scooter, I assume you just go on the app and it tells you where the nearest one is? There's not like, this is one of the things I really like about Capital Bike Share is that you say, "I'm going to commute this morning. I'm going to go to this central location. There should be 12 bikes there, at least some availability." Here, I don't really understand how, I mean, I appreciate the technology is there. I just don't understand how people are utilizing.
Apps do tell you if there's a scooter available.
But within, but you have no guarantee, so you need to get to the metro.
Well, you have to, you have to look around and see if there's one around and reserve it. And there's also a power issue, like if you can find one with enough power to go where you want to go.
Right, right.
Because I think a lot of them run out of power and that's why they end up in bushes.
I mean, this is, this is a problem that the companies will solve in terms of power and distribution. I just didn't really know how.
I've seen more than one person run out of power and just kind of throw it in the bush.
Oh, my God.
Keep walking.
I think that's why we see a lot of the usage patterns. So like, so Capital Bike Share is heavily, you see the spike in the morning and peak, and PM peaks, so it's heavily commuter. And then dockless is more kind of even throughout the day, so it's more for these one-off trips. Because commuters aren't relying on it because they don't know it's going to be outside their door every day. So it's more of these kind of one-off trips.
So is these, well, let's look at the, well, I guess, are these services, the Lime and the Jump, are they really eating into Capital Bike Share? Or because of the reliability, that still seems to be maintaining its place? I mean, we could literally be just four years behind the path and the investment we just made or plan on making might be out of date.
I think it depends on the convenience of the location. So I've had people I work with use their Capital Bike Share in Alexandria for the commute, but only because we were close to a dock. Like, if you're more than two blocks from a dock, then you're kind of more iffy about it.
Well, that's the great thing about these dockless. You don't have to worry about that.
Right, except that you also don't know where they're going to be.
That's right.
So at least if you, like, the people who regularly use it are people who have a location close to a dock.
But again, this is not just the scooters and the bikes. It's Lyft, it's Uber, and everything else is coming in. And you got to have some sort of system for making it all work together and getting it. I mean, this is the first time we've even had mention in a, in a plan for new development, right? For Uber and Lyft drop-offs and pickups for an actual place. We never had that before. Yet we shut down Broad Street on Friday and Saturday nights with people just sitting there in the middle with their lights on. And then you get the deliveries piled on top of it. It's pretty awesome. And, you know, so we really need to do.
I think this is more complex than the Uber and Lyft. It's a different mode of transportation. It's the fact that it resides in a place when not being used that is different than the cars. And we know how to handle cars. I mean, they're essentially different kind of, I mean, generally speaking, we know how to manage cars. And I use that broad-based. This is something different. This is.
Oh, yeah, but there's a lot of similarities in the fact that it's got to work together somehow.
And Uber came, and Uber and Lyft came on fast, but I feel like this is exponentially faster. And maybe that's just my sense of it because of my lack of familiarity with it, but.
Well, I'm very unfamiliar.
I felt like the technology of Uber and Lyft was sort of coming in age of, you know, 2007, 2008, and we were all trying to catch up and the systems were trying to catch up. This was just ready to implement right away. And the cost of producing these scooters and bikes is, you know, nothing on scale. So it is a real challenge. I, you know, this is a good start to think about it, and we need to come up with something in the next, you know, six months or just leave it to Richmond, and that's never my preference.
Yeah, I think what you find is that people just have apps for multiple things. And if one doesn't, if they can't get this scooter, maybe they can get that scooter. If they can't do that, then they just, they do Uber. They just do whatever works at that moment, wherever they're located. That's what I see. But it is also an age thing.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
There's only, some people are not going to get on this. Okay, there's that.
The survey we did was heavily skewed under 35 and also, but more diverse users in Arlington.
But see, I think the e-bikes might pick up some older generations.
Very possible.
Right, right.
More people are, you know, the, what are those? The Razor scooters were very popular for a long time. So a lot of people using scooters now, you had a Razor. Like, we had like five Razors in our household. But if you didn't, if you grew up with a bike, the e-bike might be something you're more comfortable with.
So are there smaller jurisdictions that you're aware of that we could get guidance from, other than these bigger cities who have larger resources and staff and more space potentially to use curbside than we have?
Yeah, I mean, so I would recommend, there's a site called Smart Cities Dive that's kind of tracking, there's like 300 different deployments. And it has a map of every deployment and what companies are operating.
Smart Cities Size?
Dive.
Dive?
Yeah, Smart Cities Dive. The only, it's, a lot of them are college towns, the smaller, because that's where they kind of start.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll see that a lot, like Blacksburg.
Maybe Ferguson.
Yeah, places like that. Monrovia, California was the other one that I came across in my project. But again, beyond the college towns, not a whole lot.
Yeah, I, that's great. I mean, I think that the mode is actually pretty consistent with the message that we try to put out here in Falls Church. I mean, we try to make this a friendly to these smaller trips, things accessible. I mean, we talk about as a walkable community, but I feel that these scooters sort of fall within that general concept. But I don't know, maybe it makes it more complicated. Anyway, well, thank you very much. I mean, if you have any other questions you can ask, I think it's just been really helpful to think about it and see and listen to what you had to say.
Just one request for staff. Could you share the slides with the CACT? I think they'd be interested in seeing them.
Absolutely.
Because we were talking about that at their meeting on Wednesday.
Right.
Yeah, maybe they should be at the front end of that spear.
We talked about it at the CACT meeting, so I'll do my planning commissioner report really quick right now.
Oh, wow, jumping all the way to, no.
Yeah, I know. But as I understand it, there's a staff member that is in the, is researching this and putting something together on the transportation side. And that when they're done, it'll be something that the CACT would see and we would see, so.
Carrie Odenino.
Right. Right, exactly.
That's her, Valleywood.
Yep, so she's, they're going to put, so they're working on it on the staff side right now.
So if we, this is a question for staff here. If we need to have this policy in place by the end of the year, do you have a sense of, one, what level of detail this policy needs to, is, are we getting any guidance on it? Or it's just open-ended that says, "Come up with whatever you want"?
Is council, council working on it?
No, this is, like, the staff is just working on a policy. I did say to transportation staff that was there that we really need to see something by September, or we had no chance of getting it done by the end of the year. So hopefully, we will see something towards the end of the summer. But, yeah, so this is just, the staff is working, it's all on the staff's side right now. And then once they have something, and they're looking at Arlington, they're looking at other small localities, and they're just going to come up with their best guess of what we should do, and then we'll look at it and we'll go back and forth and hopefully.
Yeah, we're not going to get it right the first time, and there's going to be a lot of pushback, and these things are going to sort of infiltrate us quickly. And a great portion of our citizenry is going to be unhappy, and we're going to have to deal with that as we go through. This, this is a, to me, a pretty big challenge that we'll, we need, I think, we should have some view about it by the end of the year, but I have no expectation that we have the policy in place. To me, you need the data, and it doesn't even sound like we can get that aggregated at this point. They're trying to keep that proprietary. And, I mean, maybe the policy is something as simple as you need to provide us data that's, you know, unidentifiable to individual users and things like, the words escaping me right now, but.
Well, I think really, we don't even want to know individ, we just want to know what the flow of usage, yeah.
But you just have to be able to gather the data so we can be informed about. To make an uninformed decision on this at the pace that it's moving is, seems silly, but give some guidance.
We need to know how Bike Share is doing, too.
Right, right.
And that's coming in, I mean, that's zooming in on time.
But Bike Share, we will get that on. So I think that, I think that that's something that is going to be, have to be a thing where the localities and the companies come together, because if they want support from communities, then we need to know they're being used and how they're being used. And it also allows us to change our policy if it's not working. And you can't know that without data. So I think, I think you're right, that this is going to be a lot of back and forth here because data is going to be necessary. Just so, because the same thing with Bike Share, we're going to, we put it in, we're going to look at data in a few months out. We're going to look at data again, and then we may find ourselves shifting our stations, you know?
Yeah, this is not going to, I mean, this is going to be an ongoing thing, not just with these scooters, but now as soon as we solve this, we're going to be into autonomous vehicles. I mean, it's just not going to stop. And we just need, I think, to be smart about it. That's a, that's no direction at all, but just be thoughtful. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The justice. I did read something about a flying cab.
Okay, this is a roosie. Do we have any petitions for items not on the agenda? No, all right. Got a bunch of people here. They're probably here for actions, items under six, A, B, and C. A is for, we're going to handle these separately. The first one is on the Falls Church City School Board properties, the re-subdivision. Are we going to, thank you. Are we going to get a staff report about the, I mean, we've had a work session. We've already voted on this in some form or version. We're pretty familiar. I think maybe since we're going to take an action, we need to hear a presentation, but I think it can be relatively brief.
I don't think we really need that much background.
Well, it's for the, this is a public meeting. This is a public action.
Just to put it in a little context.
Looks like six A and six B are the same motion, but I don't know.
Are six A and six B, I didn't look at the actual language, because we, last, a couple of weeks ago when we handled this, we dealt with it. Has totally separate items. Are we?
Well, it's written with an and.
Now I see it, I mean, now I see the.
There are also, yeah, separate items on the agenda for voting, in terms of your recommendations and approval.
Okay, so we'll just end the first motion without the and on the end.
So the way, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the same thing as you, so B would be the motion, yeah, hold on one second.
Maybe the other one is different, sorry.
Well, it just goes the opposite way. They're both just generally the same thing, except for a little bit of the anguish.
So I guess that is two different things.
That's about the only difference.
So what's the B? We'll get to it. Why don't you give the staff report on the re-subdivision?
No, I thought that was.
We'll start off with six A, and that's the Falls Church School Board properties, the re-subdivision. And previously, as you had mentioned, on May 6, we, you acted on both the subdivision and consolidation plat. At the same time, the city council and the West Falls Church Economic Development Team were in a separate meeting. And there were some changes in the property that they were talking about as part of this, this division of the 34 acres and providing for the mixed-use project that's proposed, as well as the high school project. And so in that discussion, they continued their action on it while we were actually approving it at that time. So it's back to us now, and the reconfiguration is just a little different. And you had gotten a briefing on it at your work session just on June 3. And since then, there's, staff's completed its review, and there were no changes to what you saw. So just to highlight what the new subdivision consolidation applications include is the re-subdivision and the consolidation of the properties for the school board, as well as the city of Falls Church. And it's a total of 34 acres, and this would also create the West Falls Church Economic Development Site by re-subdivision. And that would be of the school parcel C, which includes the creation of the parcel D for the economic development site. And this would not exceed the 30% of the total land area and maintains the high school access and frontage along Haycock. And then also, there's the consolidation portion where the city-owned properties A and B, as indicated in the subdivision materials, would be consolidated with parcel C. And the square footages are indicated in the documents. Subdivision is consistent with the land purchase, which is the resolution TR 1914, which is the acquisition of approximately 9.45 acres of land, and that's the subject of your next action. And that's for the purpose of the mixed-use project. And then, secondly, after the purchase, there's the sale of the land, which is TR 1914, which is also the subject of your next action. And that's the conveyance of approximately 9.96 acres of land and being the parcels A and B that I just referred to, which is the city-owned parcels that are being conveyed to the school. So the action before you tonight is move the planning commission grant preliminary and final subdivision plat approval of the subdivision being a re-subdivision and consolidation of properties. And then, secondly, in six B, move the planning commission grant final approval of the consolidation plat, which parcels A, B, and C are then consolidated for purposes of the school configuration in final. So that's what's before you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, one and two, further questions?
That's pretty cut and raw.
Okay.
I just want to see the $10 exchanging hands.
We'll get, make sure that we take pictures of that. All right, since we voted on this before, I think we're, we did have quite a number of questions back in May, and then we did have a work session on this. I think we got it. Let me open this up to the public before we make a motion. Anybody want to talk about item six A? All right, seeing none, then let's entertain a motion.
Yeah, just a point. So on here, it's item six A, but the motion is six A and six B. You want those two motions together, correct? Because there's an and.
Yeah, you can do the two together, and it would take care of the two action items, six A and six B.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So I'll do it. So move that.
Six A and six B.
I'm sorry. No, the, six A and the six B are subsets of the subdivision consolidation action. The agenda is a different six A, six B.
No, I, no, I got that. But I was just making sure on the, because I realized you have agenda number six A on this one, and then the other one is the agenda number six B, so it's just confusing.
It is, I agree.
But the two, on the, on the agenda number six A, staff report, that proposed motion that has six A, six B, you want that. That can be together, right?
That can be, that can be one motion, yes.
That's on the page together, those. Okay. Okay, so move that the planning, I move that the planning commission grant preliminary and final subdivision plat approval of Barrett's Hill subdivision being a re-subdivision and consolidation of the properties of the Falls Church City School Board of the City of. Church City School Board of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, and I move that the planning commission grant final plat approval being the consolidation of parcels A, B, and C, Barrett's Hill subdivision.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, let's take a roll call vote.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Ms. T?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, unanimous.
They really make this like seven, eight A and seven A B.
I agree. Okay, let's move on to the land transfers.
All right, so this is the second item under the action items, and as I alluded to, under the subdivision context, the proposed motion includes, one, the purchase of land, and that would be to approve the resolution TR-1914. That's the acquisition of approximately 9.45 acres of land, being a portion of the parcel, you know, known as the 7124 Leesburg Pike, and that's for the purpose of establishing the mixed-use development site. Secondly, is a sale of land. First was a purchase of land, and this is recommendation to council on both of these. And for the second, sale of land is TR-19-15, that's conveyance approximately 9.97 acres of land, being the parcels commonly known as 7124 Leesburg Pike, for school purposes. And that would be basically the parcels A and B being conveyed to the schools. So that's what's before you. Like you said, you recently had a work session on this, so if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to address them.
I have no further questions. The, looks like the...
What was the slight little difference of land?
I think, well, I'll let him answer. It has to do with like these little cutouts.
There was this, basically, a straightening, and there used to be an additional parcel that would have been the parking garage.
Yeah, I know, okay.
And so, there was the elimination of that, and then there's still a small jog in it, but it's generally been straightened out, and the numbers work for everybody.
To the letter of...
Okay, let me open this up to the public, if we, since we have no questions. Anybody in the public want to comment on land transfers? All right, seeing none. I'm going to close it to the public. All right, let's entertain a motion on West Falls Church land transfers.
Want to do it again?
No, I can do it again. So, but this has to be two different ones. It looks like the way you have these two, or?
Yes, yeah, two different ones here, and then, you know, recommendation to council.
Okay, so, let's see. I'll do the first one. I move that the planning commission recommend approval to city council of TR-19-14, acquisition of the approximately 9.45 acres of land, being a portion of the parcel commonly known as 7124 Leesburg Pike, RPC-51-221-001, for the purpose of a mixed-use development project.
I'll second it.
Any comments? All right, let's take a roll call vote.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Ms. T?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes. All right, unanimous again.
Okay, so now we have our second one. I move that the planning commission recommend approval to city council of TR-19-15, conveyance of the approximately 9.97 acres of land being the parcels commonly known as 7124 Leesburg Pike, RPC-251-221-002, and 51-221-003, for school purposes.
And I'll second that one also.
Anybody from the public want to talk about TR-19-15? Seeing none, closing it to the public. Any questions from the commission on this one? Seeing none. Can we take a roll call vote?
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Ms. T?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Unanimous, how about that?
You didn't expect that, right?
I could have spoiler'd alert that one. All right, let's move on to the West Falls Church action item six C.
This one's another item you voted on before. Thank you. Before I get to the staff report, we had a community meeting held on June 12 last week to introduce the revised development proposal to members of the boards and commissions and the general public. We heard comments and questions from the public and boards and commissions, so I just wanted to sort of provide a summary of those comments and common themes for the record, before I get to the staff report. In terms of landscaping, we heard questions and concerns related to streetscape with, at Street A, and opportunities for additional landscaping, trees, trees and landscaping adjacent to school, and designing streets and buildings for healthy tree growth. In terms of traffic impacts, we heard questions related to mode share, public transportation opportunities, and connection to metro, as well as traffic calming measures for pedestrian and cyclist safety. There were also questions related to surge parking during school and other activities, and incorporation of smart parking technology. We also heard questions on future vitality of the retail and elements for regional draw. In terms of overall environmental sustainability, there were questions and comments related to electrical vehicle charging stations, storm water management, and incorporating green infrastructure, and applying LEED versus other standards to the project. Lastly, for connection to adjacent sites, how does the project fit in with the future development patterns in the area, including the Virginia Tech campus and federal realty property? So those were the questions and comments we heard from the public on June 12 meeting. With that, I'll just lead into the staff report. I'll be brief. What's before you tonight is a special exception entitlement application for recommendation to the city council. On February 25, city council referred to project to city boards and commissions. The planning commission held a public hearing on April 1 and recommended approval of the application with several recommendations. To scheduled second hearing on May 13, city council deferred the application to July 8 to give staff and applicant additional time to address comments and received, comments that were received from staff, city boards and commissions, school board, and Fairfax County. Council also referred depending application to the EDA and school board for comments, and to the planning commission for recommendation. Applicant has submitted revised development proposal on June 3, now on a reduced land area of 9.45 acres. The subject site is on the economic development portion of the current middle and high school campus. A summary of the key changes proposed in the revised concept is provided under staff report, staff analysis section on page 7 of the report. The proposed project is a mixed-use development comprised of several buildings under a two-phase development proposal. Phase one includes office, hotels, senior housing, multifamily condos, multifamily rental apartments, retail, civic, entertainment uses, grocery, and a central open space. Phase two includes office, retail, and multifamily condos. The current use on the site includes the existing Georgia Mason High School and several parking lots that serve the school. The current zoning designation is B2 Central Business. The comprehensive planned future land use map designation is mixed-use, and within the Special Revitalization District for Education and Economic Development. On May 13, the city council approved the terms for and authorized the city manager to execute the comprehensive agreement. In general, the comprehensive agreement sets out the business terms of the development agreement, such as schedule of land payments to the city, deconstruction covenants, and schedule of performance. The special exception entitlement that's before you for action sets out the land entitlements for developer, and will govern the conceptual development program, including building heights, locations, and uses, and will be refined as part of the special exception site plan to be submitted and approved in the future. So the development proposal before you is conceptual in nature, and the site plan will provide details for city review and approvals. The special exception site plan process, similar to the S.E. process, the entitlement process, will consist of, one, referral of the application by the city council to boards and commissions, two, staff review and review by the planning commission and other boards and commissions, and finally, approval by the city council. On April 1, planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the development proposal, and asked that several items be incorporated into the S.E. materials, as well as the special exception site plan. Staff is of the opinion that the revised development proposal begins to address several of these items, and I'll just sort of go through the four conditions that were included in the planning commission motion previously, and then how the project addressed those. In terms of hotel massing, the hotel was moved to the north half of block B, and the microunit apartment building would be located on block C. The revised plans would provide an alternate layout that these two uses could switch locations, but in either case, the building massing is proposed to shift height away from the school plaza and placed mostly along the Commons Drive. The second condition the planning commission included was elements and ground floor uses to activate the Haycock Road and Leesburg Pike frontages. The grocery store is moved to the corner of Leesburg Pike in the current proposal, and provides commercial presence and activity at the corner and along Haycock, as well as Leesburg Pike. Additionally, retail is proposed at the corner of Haycock Road and Street A, also providing additional commercial activity along Haycock and Street A. The applicant will continue to work on design elements to further activate the streetscape during SESP. A placemaking and amenity plan and other illustrative materials were requested. A draft placemaking and amenity plan was provided with a second submission to be finalized at SESP. Further refinement of the phasing plan, including timing and parking tabulations, was requested. The parking tabulation was updated to include parking ratios by phases with a second submission to be finalized at SESP. In terms of fiscal impact, 55 pupils for phase one and 17 pupils for phase two are projected, for a total of 72 pupils for the entire development. The projected net annual fiscal revenue is 5.1 million for phase one and 1.8 million for phase two, for a total of 6.9 million for the entire development. That is really all I have for the staff analysis. With that, the project is, as concluded in the staff analysis, the project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and substantially achieves the goals of the Special Revitalization District for Education and Economic Development, a matterful, with several items listed in the proposed motion for further refinement during the site plan, and that's included on the front page of the staff report for a proposed motion for the action tonight. The developer and his project team is here today, if you have any questions. Other than that, there were no updates to their previous presentation that you heard on June 3 during the work session, that they can present if you'd like. It's an open question.
I don't think that's necessary, but unless somebody needs to see something.
Well, I was wondering, because I was there on the Wednesday, June 12 meeting. I just wondered if it would be good to see the visual of where things moved, because you can read it, but I think it's easier for you to see where things shift if you haven't seen it. I don't know if you've seen that.
I think I've seen it, but maybe...
I think that's the last meeting, I think.
I don't see that one on the desktop, the presentation. I see the amenity plan presentation. Did you save it on?
Oh, you want the other one?
Yeah, the other.
Well, like, have you seen the one where the, where the office building moved?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we hadn't seen that yet.
I think we saw that the last meeting.
Did we? Oh, okay, I apologize.
I said, okay.
Do you want, do you want us to pull that up?
No, you don't have to. I just, I was trying to remember if we've seen that, because I've been to too many meetings.
Right, right.
And I was like, did I see that at a planning commission meeting, or did I only see the other meetings?
No, it was at the last meeting, and it was so much clearer.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure. So it was just funny, I'm like, it's all blurred. There's just, I've seen it lots, too many times.
And some of the things, you know, just the closeness of the two office buildings, I think, would be very, very good. And I think the locations made a lot more sense, you know, in a lot of ways, so, yeah.
I guess I had one question, because I have been to...
But if you want to see it up there.
No, no, I don't need to see it. I had one question about the hotel, because I was thinking about it on Wednesday, but I didn't want to ask questions, because the other, you know, committees were there, and it was their time. But, so with the movement of the hotel, will it change anything about the hotel, or is it just a physical movement? Like, you expect this to have the same type of hotel and everything like that?
Does this work?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're all on.
Yeah, it's literally just the location. It won't impact the brand, or the size, or anything like that.
No, I was just thinking about that on Wednesday, so I wanted to ask.
But the one thing that was nice about it is that the terrace was going to be facing out towards the commons, which would be much better for musical presentations and special events and everything. It's much, much better. And then, it's also away from the school. But we still need to get that little, have you worked with the school board on the turnaround?
We had a conversation with Dr. Noonan, and both agreed, once they get through the groundbreaking, we can start having those conversations.
We really need that. We really, because, you know, that was in the original one, it should stay. But I thought that the location of the hotel and the usability of it was much more practical with that terrace facing outward to the, you know, just think about the music that can come from there, you know? Come on.
Agreed.
Come on, come on.
Yeah.
So there's been really no changes since we saw this at the work session. I had, this procedure and how we're handling this particular application is different than we typically do. Not only do we usually do a site plan at the same time as we're doing the original preliminary approval, but in this case, we're really making a recommendation to city council, as opposed to being the final voice. I have been really supportive of this, this plan because of the deadlines and the ability to get this thing moving. And, but I had some reluctance, not knowing, having so many sort of outstanding elements that we're going to have to address in a couple of years. But over time, I have come to think this process has some real advantages on a development of this nature. You were here for part of that discussion in terms of the scooter policy, and how things are changing. Things are moving at such a pace and are so dynamic right now, that this actually, this delayed process for us to review site plan gives not only you a chance to incorporate what's happening in the market at that time, but also us a chance to gather some data and understand what, what may be a better way to approach it, or other requests. At this point, you know, I'm not expecting you to give me a big pitch on how you're handling scooters, but maybe in two years, I am.
Or skateboards.
Skateboards?
Why, they're still around.
No, people, people just put up signs, like, no skateboarding allowed, and it happens anyway. That's, that's how it's managed. Sorry.
So I've actually embraced this new, I, the way, the policy, the way we're approaching this. I do like that the planning commission normally does have a final say on site plan, so I'm not loving that part, but in this case, it makes, makes sense. So we, we've had, we voted on this in April, given the updates. We think, I think at the work session, we were pretty clear that overwhelmingly, these were good changes, both the change of where the hotel was, I think the likelihood that the second, the phase two and the office building that happens right next to each other will, makes that more likely. My only fear, which I think I said last meeting, was that the construction is now right by the school in a way that it was not. But I'm sure, you know, we can prevail on that and figure out a way to make that safer for our students. I will echo Mrs. Hockenberry in terms of the turnaround. I would like to see that. I appreciate that, you know, they're rushing on their side.
Yep.
And them meeting their deadlines is really essential to you meeting yours, and us getting the money that we need to pay for that thing on the other side. So we're all sort of working together. I appreciate all the work that you've done to make that happen, to keep us on schedule, sign an agreement in the timeframe that we had laid out almost a year ago, which I know came down to the wire, which we probably could have predicted, but congratulations for getting there, and to the city for getting there, too. So I'm happy to vote on it as we see it here. I know we have a little bit more refinements to do, and as we get some more clarity, as the market develops over the next upcoming year or so. But this is just a really, I've said it before, just a wonderful project for the, for the city. I think it's really, truly going to transform this part of the city. I'm excited how it's going to potentially work with the other jurisdictions and the Virginia, Virginia Tech, University of Virginia site, and also the Wamata. When this all comes together, I think what the citizens will feel is less about, you know, what's in our borders versus, you know, Fairfax County's borders, but really what the sense of the overall feeling is. And to the average citizen, they're not going to care, you know, who gets the money from this, on this line versus the other. But if, but, but what this is going to do for the city around a metro station, and, you know, alternate terms of transportation, and the commitment to quality, I think that's, that's been made here, is just really, really exciting to, to me, and I think to the city as a whole. I think there's going to be some adjustment. People, I think, are paying attention, for sure, but when they see a 15-story building go up, I think that's going to open their eyes. But this seems like the right location for that kind of added density. I know it needs to happen for the pro forma and what we're doing, but if I were to pick a spot in the city where I think this density is necessary and relevant and needed, this would be it. So... So I'm actually all for using it in a way that will be beneficial to the taxpayers ultimately and to the betterment of that, this community that you're building. So I am really pleased with what we have before us and I'm excited to see what happens in the next phase as we get more clarity.
You reached out to Dalia Palchak yet?
No, I have not.
You should.
I will. Yeah.
Definitely should. And so she won the primary to replace Providence's supervisor.
So she'll be the one we'll be dealing with.
Got it.
She still has to run for election in November, but she's a good person.
I imagine she's inundated at this point, but yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're a later thing for her.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say, I would agree. There's only a few places you can, I think we can have this height. And it's this site, it's the site on the other side of North Gate. There's one piece of property there and it's the east end, maybe over where, close to Eden Center. And those are the only places we can have this kind of height and have it work. So it's good we take advantage of it where we can, where it makes sense for us. You know, it was funny, you were talking about the borders, but there are a lot of people who, at least in Fairfax County, who don't know they don't live in the City of Falls Church anyway, so we'll take advantage of that.
The staff report mentioned that we might have a draft of the voluntary concessions. I gather you don't have an update.
We don't have it yet. Do you have a schedule, Evan, for the?
So we sent you a red line last week.
There's one on the.
Yeah, there's kind of.
There's kind of a draft, there's a May, well, the May 2019 draft is in our packet.
So that's the latest one we have in the packet.
Yeah, that's it.
I think there was a new.
I sent Carly a red line late last week and asked to set up a meeting.
Okay.
So she has it.
So what was the outcome there on the electric charge stations? Is it a percentage?
Yes, it's fifteen percent. It's more in keeping with the language that was recommended.
So what other major changes were there then from the last version?
There weren't many on the VCs. We had met with staff and I didn't bring it with me, but on stormwater management, there was some agreement on language. On affordable housing, there was some agreement on language. My assumption would be we could have, we need to have that document done in the next few weeks. Probably could have it wrapped up by later this week and get that out there ready. But it was, there weren't, there weren't that many changes from what you had said already.
Okay.
Does it have to be finalized before the city council votes on the SCE?
Yes, the VCs would have to be finalized.
So it's literally in the next week or so that that has to be finalized.
Yeah. You know, Matt, considering the magnitude and the complexity of these two projects, getting it done in this amount of time with, I think, people really, really working together, it's been truly, in all my experience, absolute miracle. Founders row seven years, oh, what the heck. But, but and everything else, you know, some projects were going to be and then they weren't going to be and then they were going to be. So, you know, and the years that I've been working on this, it's just incredible, the cooperation. And I think, I think basically a feeling of trust, which is really important, which is hard to deal with, with a city government and developers. And I think both with the schools and with your project, it's been very interesting and the tone that has gone on. There's been a lot of good conversations and I just am thrilled with what's going to be happening. Finally, we're going to make use of one of our metro stops. You know, that's been a thing in our history that has been, you know, not, you know, looking back was not good, but it's happened, but now we're right there. And I'm just so excited about it. Of course, excited about the schools, but the commercial development. And I will say, I won't be working with you anymore, because I'm off the Planning Commission very soon, but I will not go away. And.
You can still come to meetings.
I promise you, I will not go away.
Then we have someone that talked during public comments.
Oh, goodie. I can still talk. Russell loved that.
No, but with a three-minute length.
He'll love it. He'll love it.
With a three-minute one?
That's right. Strict three minutes.
But seriously, considering, you know, the number of projects that, you know, in all the years I've been, what, eleven? Give or take? Yeah, I guess. But this has been an absolute wow.
Great.
And I'm so excited.
It's really a testament to all of you in the city. I mean, the reason this process has gone so well is because of all the pre-work you all did in getting the approval of the bond issuance, getting the community on board with the idea of development. I mean, that completely changed the landscape for us. So it made, it made what was a really complex process in getting through a CA negotiation and a design and all the stuff we had to do that much easier, because we also had the support of the community going with us. So thank you.
But just the fact that you have to, you know, the two projects have to go so closely together. And darn, I was complaining because there wasn't a mast pole out there, but I was informed that the long fence didn't show up. Good day for it. Tomorrow it might rain. But seriously, can't wait for that.
I'd still encourage you to take a close look at the possibility of pace financing.
Yes.
As a way to lower your cost of financing and help the city kind of lock in the sustainability elements.
Right, right.
So happy to help in connecting you with people that know a lot more about it than I do at a technical level, but everything I can see so far says that should, this project should work exceptionally well for us.
You know, to use that as a sustainability factor that's built in, see how much you can get together on it. And I still am going to encourage, encourage and beg, please come into the classroom. Please come into the classroom. We've got so many kids that are so interested in geothermal and alternative energies and things like, and they're so excited about it and they really are. They're very invested in it. And, you know, even though they're on their way out, but I still think that they would get such a big kick out of seeing what's going on and knowing, you know, the layout of the geothermal and just so much, this is a huge learning situation for kids in our schools. And trust me, they are ready for it. And they'll be so, you know, and then you can get scared to death by teenagers. They're wonderful.
So in terms of, in terms of the next steps, when do we see the SESP?
So our, our thought is to have an SESP submitted in January. And so unlike, I think originally conceived, the boards and commissions meetings and everything would happen after we submitted something formally. Given the way this process has worked, we'd rather get feedback along the way. So our thought is probably October, November to start having meetings with the community, meetings with, maybe a pre-meeting with all of you, meeting with some boards and commissions, so that by the time we're submitting something in January, it's not really a surprise to anybody. And then that process would play out throughout the spring and the summer with our goal of submitting permits by next fall, a year from this fall, so we can break ground in February of 21.
Which sounds fantastic. So. Help me understand what happens or what your obligation is if in the next eighteen months, we start to see an economic downturn in the construction market?
Right.
You have signed a contract with the city, you'll have received your entitlements and the market starts to decline. I'm just not familiar with what your obligation, I mean, can the land, I appreciate that you're putting a lot of money upfront and, but if the market is in a bad period, do you have the option, I assume you do, to let it sit for a while, even if that's not your intention?
We do for a period of time, yeah. So there is a, there's a schedule, a performance schedule within the CA, within the Conference of Agreement as one of the exhibits. And so it does allow for the start of the first building to be, I think it's twelve months after or eighteen months even, after that initial date after closing. So there is a little bit of a time period where we can, you know, hold on if we need to. I mean, God willing, we're not going to have the type of recession we had a few years ago.
We got hit on that one.
Yeah, but one of the benefits of this project is we have every use within it and the type of investors we're going to be going out to are very long-term equity investors that are going to hold this for forever, or maybe not forever, but for a very long time. So typically, those investors are not looking at a short term. I have to build at the right moment and sell it. They're typically looking for a longer-term return and they'll understand that there might be a dip in the market for a year or two, but it's not going to really impact them. There could be some benefits, quite frankly, as far as construction costs.
I was going to say, your costs can go down and as a region, we're known for taking longer to go in and coming out early.
Right.
So it's actually a boon if you can build right in that middle part.
Exactly.
There's six trillion dollars in capital gains setting out there, waiting to be invested.
Yeah. Yeah, and so Pike and Rose is a good example. It was built right. We planned it, entitled it, purchased it during the recession and built it, started, got it financed and started building it during the recession. So on a project of this scale, you, I mean, obviously, I can't speak for the horrible things, right? If something, the whole world goes to hell in a handbasket. But I don't, I don't see a softening or a slight recession having a huge impact.
So Phase One construction is slated generally to take how long?
Two years.
Two years. So as, because my view is that we're looking at that eighteen to twenty-four months where we start to see a little dip. I do not think it looks anything like, you know, eight, nine. So you would be in construction and likely coming out of it as you are finishing the construction complete? I mean, just in my, you know, opaque crystal ball.
Right, our goal is to take the property in February of 21, spend three to four months doing demolition and then kind of officially break ground with new construction later that spring and open in the spring of 23, spring and summer of 23.
The timing might work well. You know, I just think it's important that, I mean, I think it's important that you retain the option to let it sit till the market's right for you. This is, you know, quite a huge investment, but that the citizens are not surprised if we find that that happens, that I think the expectation at this moment is that, you know, these things are finished to start, boom, 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 boom. And it may not happen that way, despite the fact that we've laid it out that way, so.
We happen to have the best council and best boards and commissions that I've seen in a long while. So that in itself is a lot of moving forward. Now, should we run into naysayers along the way? We don't know.
Well, I think that's one of the challenges with having the council involved with site plan.
Right, right.
Site plan is usually just planning commission, because we're a non-political group. And so you do have that little bit of a risk with having the council involved in it, because you don't know who's going to be on council.
Yeah, but even with that, everyone is motivated from a tax perspective, from a funding, a school perspective.
I think they are too, but I just think.
You never can tell.
Yeah.
We've been down that road.
You'd be surprised.
But also cooperation during demolition, because I know there's a lot of thoughts on selling and fundraisers from some parts of the school. Some people want parts of the gym, some people want parts of the auditorium, and they're all talking about it.
Community demo day.
Yeah.
Huh?
Oh, there we go. That's safe.
But seriously, I know some people just, you know, I talk to enough alumni that they want a little bit of this, a little bit of that, and you can sell it and raise funds.
There you go.
Or something, you know, so.
Do we have any more questions for the applicant?
No.
No. Well, let me sort of piggyback on what Mrs. Hockenberry said. In terms of the cooperation with the city, it really has been a wonderful experience working with your group and you're willing to listen to the community. I was fortunate enough to be on the committee that was involved with the selection, the selection committee. And one of the, one of the things that we looked at, one of the things that we considered was the commitments you had made personally about working with the city and the cooperation and that sort of, well, the cooperative atmosphere. And through this point, I would say you've lived up to that commitment and certainly as it relates to dealing with the Planning Commission, and so I just want to thank you for that.
It's unusual.
Not anymore. He's setting the, setting the standard.
This is high point.
All right, let me open this to the public before we take a, take a vote on this. Anybody wish to speak on the West Falls Church SCE? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public. And somebody gets the honor of reading this long proposed motion.
You going to do that?
I've already done.
We need all the wheres's and.
Yes, because Paul loves them.
Okay, I guess.
He might be listening.
Yeah, Paul might be watching.
I doubt it. He's otherwise engaged.
I don't know. Sometimes when you have babies, you find a way.
If I get my part, I second it.
All right. Mr. Chair, whereas an application for a special exceptional entitlement to allow a mixed-use development project up to a maximum height of fifteen stories has been submitted by Falls Church Gateway Partners, the applicant, pursuant to Section forty-eight dash four-eight-six C in conformance with procedures set forth in Section forty-eight dash four-eight-eight, four-eight-eight-B of the city code. And whereas the two-step process outlined in Section forty-eight dash four-eight-eight-B for special exception entitlement and special exception site plan allows for further refinement of specific project elements during special exception site plan. Whereas, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and substantially achieves the goals of the Special Revitalization District for Education and Economic Development. And now therefore, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of TR nineteen dash zero-eight to city council for public hearing and action on July eighth, 2019. Further, I move that the Planning Commission recommend the following elements be incorporated into future SESP materials in addition to elements already required by code. One, elements and ground floor uses to activate the Haycock Road and Leesburg Pike frontages. Two, continue designing intersection of Route Seven and Haycock Road appropriately as a city gateway, including tightened roadway geometry, increasing pedestrian access, safety and appropriate landscaping. Three, a full traffic signal be considered at New Street B instead of the proposed Hawk signal. And four, a parking management and transportation demand management plan that supports non-automobile modes of travel and thereby minimizes roadway congestion and reduces the need for auto parking.
Like scooters?
Sorry, Rob. I did. I second it. Sorry, Rob.
Any discussion on this motion?
She's like, I won.
No discussion. All right. I think we're ready to take a vote.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Teas?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. Passes unanimously. We are of one mind this evening.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Look forward to working with you.
I almost got tears in my eyes. Wow.
Congratulations again.
Night, y'all. Thanks for all you guys, for your work.
Yeah. We made it easy on you tonight.
When do we get a rebate from the company, from Walter Phillips?
I think you're not kidding, one.
All right. We are ten minutes ahead of schedule. I love it and ready for the Planning Director's report. Actually, we're going to do the Planning Commissioners' reports. I'm sorry. I shouldn't know that. But Melissa's already gone.
I'm gone.
So any other Planning Commissioner reports?
C E B I.
Mr. Chair, I attended a conference last week from an organization called the Congress for the New Urbanism, or CNU, and it was in Louisville, Kentucky, where I saw lots of scooters.
Whoa.
CNU is, it's actually very tailor-made for the city, because they're focused on walkable communities, trying to get people out of cars, alternative to sprawl. I think even Andy would find some elements of interest from historical sustainability. So there's a lot that speaks about that organization that is very applicable here. So I enjoyed the conference. There were over sixteen hundred participants and they were from government, commercial development, consulting and interested citizens. It was four days, over a hundred sessions that I had an opportunity to choose from. And the sessions covered shared mobility, very similar to what we heard this evening, ADUs, both the affordable and accessory versions, opportunity zones, which unfortunately, we can't use here, but it's a lot of our.
We're about as far away from an opportunity zone as it gets.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, they were selected behind closed doors by the governor earlier in the year. So we didn't really have much of a chance to do that. Anyway, there were sessions on alternatives, alternatives to traditional Euclidian zoning, which of course is what we have here, retail design, which I found very interesting, and parking. And I highly recommend, they taped the plenary session with Donald Shoup, who is the big guru on parking. So if you just Google on YouTube the, or not Google, but if you just do in the search box on YouTube the Congress for New Urbanism and Donald Shoup, it'll, it'll come up.
Put it out in the email.
It's very entertaining. It's very entertaining. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that and
Sounds great.
recommend if anybody wants to attend it next year, it'll be in the Twin Cities, that somebody from the planning commission should get an opportunity to go.
Louisvilleville is a great place to visit.
I'm a fan.
Yeah, yeah, I used to live there.
So that's all I have.
Well, thank you for going, representing us.
Absolutely.
Mr. Prentice?
Just quickly, the library board of trustees meets on Wednesday nineteenth. At the, we're going to see the site plan for the library construction on the first of July. Two-thirds of the construction documents have already been received, will have ninety percent by August, and they expect to start construction in October.
Looking forward to seeing that come our way.
Yep.
What did I do? I did something that was
Oh, I forgot Rexon Park, I can do Rexon Park.
Yeah, go for it.
No, so I went to Rexon Park's meeting, and, so they don't have meetings in July and August, so this was their last meeting for the summer break. And so they are, they have a lot of development stuff coming up, so they have the field out at Larry Graves, sorry, that they're, I guess they've been, I guess the rain slowed that down a little bit, but that's still going to go in this summer, the, you know, the new artificial turf
Turf.
field. And Big Chimneys Park, they're getting close to that, you know, being, have a final plan moving forward with that. And the new entrance to Howard Herman should be fixed soon.
Should be done, yeah.
So when they put that in, they asked for a certain width for trucks to be able to go through, and unfortunately, the people who made it measured on the outside instead of the inside of the arch.
It's too narrow.
Yeah, so they're reconstructing, so they just left it in place now, they're going to reconstruct it and push it out.
And then they're going to have a grand opening, I hope.
Yeah, hopefully. So anyway, so that's why if you go by and you wonder why for like over a month or so, it's just kind of not done, that is why.
Disappointing, oh my god.
So, well, it's, you know, it's typical, it's like the light that should be going in at Annandale and Hillwoods, we've had a contractor problem there.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if you guys, that, that was talked about at CACT, that the contractor, there's a pole issue, and so that's why that's being held up. Anyway.
The Tinnerhill Music Festival was very well organized.
Oh, yeah.
Extremely well.
It went well.
And just very well attended, and I think they actually made some money. So it was, it was one of the best ones they've had, so it was very well attended.
Well, I thought what's interesting is I saw, usually you see a lot of people you don't know, people who go to the Blues Festival, this time I saw, you know, you saw a lot of people you didn't know, but we saw, I saw more city people than I've ever seen before. So the advertisement or the marketing just
Really, they did a good job on that.
City was better this year, because I saw people I'd never seen go.
And the EDA will not meet in July, they will meet in August. But they had the opening of the park
Yeah.
that we were all at, and then the groundbreaking on Friday for the school.
Would you like to say more about that?
That was just wonderful, it was very well organized, Mary Beth Conover did a fantastic job on that.
The choir was very good.
It's just, yes, of course it was, but that was fun.
My words.
There wasn't enough wind, though.
No, they really needed more wind.
Tim, were you there?
I watched the YouTube.
Oh, because I
We looked for you.
I mean, wind, oh my god.
Yeah, I was in Louisville.
Yeah.
Ah.
Well, the planning commission got to take our honorary picture. We were deep in the, deep on the list of participants, but we managed to weasel our way onto the
Yeah, we pushed our way through.
We broke in early.
Deservedly so, I might add, but yes, we, we got our picture taken and
Also, I found out it was not foreign dirt, it was actually George Mason dirt there.
Oh, good.
I, I think that's important.
All right. Well, it sounds like we're behind schedule already, so we need to
One day.
We need to up the pace.
Okay.
Are, any other planning commissioner reports?
Yeah.
All right, great, now we're ready for the planning director's reports, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun before.
We got babies.
Our next meeting, we expect to be in the new City Hall.
Get out of here.
When is it going to open?
I look forward to it.
I was kind of promised one meeting to sit up at the dais.
That's, that's what we're doing for you.
When is it?
July one.
Oh, okay.
I hope you're going to be there, because that's your moment.
That's what you wanted, didn't you? That's what I ordered.
That was part of my negotiating skills.
We should have a cake.
Come on, you know.
That's really, actually, great news.
After nineteen years.
Yeah, we got notice from the city clerk last week that the council will inaugurate it on the twenty-fourth of June.
Right.
Yeah, I can't be there for that.
And if all goes as planned, we will immediately have access. And the best news is, is whatever meeting room we had as a board and commission, in this case, the planning commission, was in the chambers, it's automatically set throughout the rest of the year, and so all those dates have been put in, and we're not having to do it individually
Oh, that's great.
as a department. So the clerk has inputted all the board and commissions.
Good.
So wherever you were meeting, Dogwood, Laurel, you'll be in those rooms in City Hall as programmed.
Okay.
Terrific, that's great news.
So, let's see.
School Board is packing up, man, they're, they're a mess up there.
Yeah.
So in terms of schedule, we've got schedule for July one, the George Mason site plan, which is the Phase One B. We gave them staff comments on the twenty-eighth of May and the deadline of June tenth to get revised plans, and they've been meeting and providing engineering drawings directly to the engineers the last, well, month, really, we've had a couple of direct meetings on that. They missed the deadline on the tenth, it's been a week, and we just got plans at four o'clock today. It's going to be difficult to hold the July fifteenth meeting that we targeted. Basically, no staff review of the plans, and we have to post a staff report for the work session on Wednesday of this week. So we haven't communicated that to anybody at this point, I'll be with the manager and go over that schedule, but the thought is we'll move the work session for July one to the fifteenth slot, and the site plan will go to first meeting in August the fifth. So unfortunately, they were late, nine weeks, and I built in a week review, and so I've got zero review time as a staff, so.
So you can, are they going to, are we going to actually have them on July one?
No.
No, so we're absolutely not going to have them.
Well, at this point, I'm going to confirm it tomorrow, but at this point, the work session we were going to have, we were hoping to have plans and some review and, and where we were, and we won't be able to have that ready in forty-eight hours.
Right, so, so we're looking at probably July fifteenth for the work session?
Yes, moving that two weeks, and then
Okay.
move the file action two weeks. It's, it's been an issue for us with this applicant, so.
Yeah.
You know, and
It's unfortunate.
This was the chance for them to take the time to get it right, and, and they failed to do that, so.
Well, they could still dig.
Yeah, I mean, they've, they've got things that they work on, and then, but at this point, you know, we were relying on them to get the job done, and they had two weeks to do it, and they'd been working on the engineering all along, so it was just the final zoning comments
Mm-hmm.
that we had expected. We were having issues with the substandard parking that was left over from the middle school, and we think they've solved that, but we haven't seen anything.
Okay.
So they eliminated the need for variance, which was another process, go to VZA and so forth, so, but, you know, I'll, I'll be looking at the evidence of that in the next couple of days.
Okay.
To evaluate that, so, that's where we are, unfortunately, but not, not due to our, so.
Yeah, so I, I've written several emails about this already, I know you and I went back and, you, you and I went a little bit, one response today. When they were here last time, I asked them for a construction schedule in the native format.
Yes.
I'm just saying this publicly, so, because it's been communicated through emails, and I want to make sure that if the applicant is listening, they, they hear this. I'd ask for a construction schedule in the native format. They provided a twelve-page PDF, which is not in the native format. On that schedule, it showed no logic between activities, had no critical path, showed no float values, which are things that are important for people who, in my profession, review schedules. And now they are going to be behind schedule, and I want to be able to evaluate that. I think that at this point, it was essential when I asked when they were on schedule, because I wanted to see what the baseline schedule looked like. Now that they are already in recovery mode, I think it's even reasonable to ask for them to make another submission that shows them meeting the substantial completion date, the eighteen-month substantial completion date, and that I want the native files, which is an XER extension, or they won't be on the docket again. This, having missed this deadline makes this to me an absolute requirement. We have, as we talked about today, there are a lot of pieces that are in line because of when this school finishes, so we can do the demos, so the city can get the money, so we can pay for the bonds, and I want some schedule assurances that they can meet this deadline with this delay. It was already going to be tight, and so if you, you or someone on our staff communicate to them that for this work session, I would like a, buy the work session, because I want to be able to ask questions at that point, I have a native primavera schedule that I can analyze.
I passed on your request today.
Thank you.
I know you were corresponding with Carley previously on it, and so I got involved today and passed it on, and so I will follow up on that.
Yeah.
As well as
I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, because I think there's this feeling that because this construction is a city, well, a city and school project, and it's on our property, and the neighbor is really the schools, that, that this is all going to work out, but we really need to understand what's happening and when it's happening, and we need a schedule that actually works. I mean, because we were at the groundbreaking, and they made it very clear that they were going to make that eighteen-month deadline, and
Yeah.
Look, I, this is what I do for a living.
Right.
Every contractor at your groundbreaking says they're going to make the deadline.
Of course.
I know.
How dare they not?
And it was a wonderful ceremony, they, you know, plan up, they designed, it's a design bill, they designed a wonderful project, I'm very excited for the community and for the city. But what happens in this, because not only am I involved in the construction scheduling side, but my main specialty is also on the dispute side, when thing, the, what's called is the claims, when things go badly.
Right.
And one of the things that contractors do is they put in these, these schedules that are subpar, and when the, when the city has some problems, they come to us, they ask us questions, we change some design elements, something happens, that they're able to then modify the schedule in a way that makes the delay look like it's the responsibility of, of the owner in this case, as opposed to it being their responsibility, because their schedule was designed in a way that shows they could never meet that completion date anyway. So if the logic is not in there in a sufficient way, and I would say, based on this PDF not even showing me the critical path, is incredibly concerning. It doesn't mean I'm accusing them of manipulating the schedule, doesn't mean that they may not have one, they just don't want to share, it may be the greatest schedule ever, but I think on other, on other private developments, I don't really care. You miss the deadline, there are consequences to that from a market standpoint, but in this case, we are the owner.
Yeah, right.
And so I think our fiduciary responsibility, when I actually have this skillset, is something that I do for a living, I am, I want to look out for the city and the taxpayers, it would take me minimal effort to make this analysis, and I think it's a reasonable request by the city, especially given the fact that they are already missed their first deadline.
And I think it's, I totally agree with you. I thought it was kind of interesting to hear that the reason they haven't dug or anything is that their fencing hasn't come in.
I mean, that should be the first thing that should have gone up on Saturday.
Well, look, I, I agree.
It doesn't bode well from the beginning.
But, but so, in a construction schedule, fencing is going to be really important, but it may not be critical. So I, I don't need to give a whole lesson on construction scheduling, but this could have, let's just say, the fencing may have, you know, a week or so float, we would all panic here, but really, what's driving this are the submittals or the long lead items, or there are other elements that the steel is, we need to get the steel. So you can be doing work, you can be doing excavation, you can make up time for lost fencing, it's not critical, but they haven't even identified to me in any way what they believe to be the critical path. So do I need to be freaking out about the fencing? Maybe not.
No, but contrast that with that Founder's Row, where the fencing was up almost immediately.
I mean, really.
Agree.
I'm not, I'm not, like, I agree with you, like, they can make this time up, but it's, it's, it's interesting, they pushed us to do the site plan in pieces so that they could have the piece
Yeah, right, right.
to start doing, moving dirt and doing whatever demolition they have to do, and then they, in fact, don't have the fencing up to do it. And in that case, why do we push through this piece of the site plan so fast?
But, look, it's a bad look for them, no matter what.
Yeah.
But
And, and all they have to do is run in the bad weather.
Well, let's, let's hope they pull it together, we get something good from them.
But so, the bad weather is a perfect example. So if I take a look at their schedule, and I assume they're going to listen to this, if I look at their schedule
You think they're going to listen to it?
Maybe, and I see that they don't have a proper weather counter in their schedule. Again, this is, you know, this is real deep, you know, nerd scheduling stuff, but we have expected rain days in this area. It's well-known, NOAA puts out these days, it's often in the specs.
Because they asked it last year.
Even if they, well, it's based on, you know, fifty-year averages or twenty-five-year averages. What, so last year won't totally affect it, but if they put in a schedule that says, we're going to meet eighteen months, and we're going to be doing, and, and we're not under roof by the time we think weather is going to come, and they didn't build in, let's say, four weather days in the month of December, and they're not closed in at that point, then I know that this is not achievable. It means they have to do other things, they have to have, they have to accept, do a recovery schedule, they have to add additional crews, they have to add additional resources.
All weekends.
It, it's all fine, that's, that's their means and methods, but if we see that they can't achieve it when they start, then we can effect change. If you get past twenty percent of the schedule, now your ability, you're deep into the S curve, and your ability to change things and accelerate and add additional crews is much more difficult for the contractor and for the owner to have that impact, saying, you're missing your dates. And the dates is because we can see from your schedule why you're missing them, it's a cursory review that can give me confidence, give the planning commission confidence, the citizens' confidence, that they have a workable schedule. If they got a workable schedule, stuff happens, you can, you can manage it appropriately, but if you're working off a flawed document, and one of the things that they said when, during the selection, was they had, you know, excellent, first-rate project controls. So I want to see that. So I, I mean, this is now something that has, I've become impassioned about.
Yeah, I think.
But hearing that they're off by a week, it makes me even more
But is there any way of relaying this to the school board, from what you're saying tonight?
We have a project manager too, that the school board has hired, right, or represented, or is that, does that not continue, this is, was that just for
The owner's representative?
The owner's representative, was that just for us at this portion?
Daisy.
Yeah, does she continue on through the construction?
Yeah, I think so.
That's what I thought, so where is she in this role? Because this is really, she should be the one...
She may have it, I, I wanna see her as a planning commissioner.
Okay, no, I understand, but I just wondered, like, that, that's, I would actually like to see her come with the site plan, because I'd like, I think she, we need to be able to understand where her role is as well.
That would probably be a good idea.
Because she's a big part of what's gonna happen here, and making sure it happens on time.
But somebody needs to come with the site plan so that you can speak to it.
Right, no, I understand that, but I just think it would be good to see her as well, because I thought she was gonna continue on through the project, but I haven't seen much coming from her lately.
No, but she needs, somebody needs to hear what's being said tonight.
No, I know, so, I agree. But it sounds like you're saying it to them and asking for...
Well, I've emailed it already, I wanna say, I wanna say it publicly, and Gary has passed it along.
Have you emailed it to the school board also?
Not to the school board, no.
No.
But, I mean, again, I think they have an owner's representative or a construction manager, I would assume that they're on top of this. We all know it's a tight schedule.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I think that she needs to come to...
Well, they're a professional organization, they should, they should know.
They should come to the work session.
That's reasonable.
So, Mr. Fuller, you're here, I think that the owner's representative, who's gonna be a construction manager as well, she needs to attend that work session if possible, because, I mean, she's got the key role of making sure that this plan actually happens.
If you assume, then you can't really, if it goes past the time, then you can't go back.
But I think that's the right person to approach with our concerns.
I a hundred percent agree.
Yeah.
I think that's a really good suggestion.
Yeah.
You'll get somebody who works for us as opposed to the contractor that's, look, they're on a firm fixed price contract here, they're gonna have to meet this deadline, it is in their, their best interest to meet the deadline and to do it as efficiently and as inexpensively as possible. Adding second crews or paying overtime is not in their best interest, and because they can't manage their subcontractors or long fence or whatever, means they may have to do that, and that's the risk they're willing, that they signed up for, but I wanna know that there's a plan in place that gets us to the substantial completion date on time.
No, and we don't want situations like what happened with the last TJ addition, where they poured all the concrete for the footings and the, everything, in the winter, and had to have heaters on it for days to try to dry the concrete, and really...
And now Daniel wasn't enjoying, come on.
Gilbane's a very professional company, which is why, you know, they were selected in part, and I don't imagine we'll see concrete pours happening in, in the winter, but that's the kind of thing, a cursory review of a reasonable schedule would say, have you thought through weather and the timing of these things, and have you planned accordingly? If they, if they have their own delays, and that pushes them into the winter, the cost of the heating blankets and...
Right, oh my gosh.
That's on them, that's not on us, but it's not that owners aren't ever at fault, we're often, if we make design changes and realize we wanna do big, 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 big change orders, or there's a differing site condition, that could happen, you know, next week, they start excavating and they uncover...
They never found what's down there, but they should've done soil testing, that's for sure.
I don't know what the contract says, I just wanna see that they...
They said they did it, I asked.
Because, you know, we added to so many problems with both the football field and Mariellen Henderson.
Well, I, I pointed that out at one of our work sessions, I asked them, they said they had done soil samples and they knew what's in there.
Particularly for the geothermal, you know.
So, I mean, we have them on public record saying they had done them and know what's there.
And we've not seen a plan for the geothermal, yeah.
So, again, this is a very professional organization, you can do geotechnical studies, you can, you can follow the specifications, but a differing site condition is a different site, you could, you could drill a hole here and then where Mr. Prentice is and say, we've done it, and then you find something where you're sitting, and that's still a different site condition.
Particularly on this land, it's all fill.
We have two minutes.
All fill.
Two minutes?
If you were gonna meet your time in...
Then we're done, I've said my piece, I wanna, I wanna schedule.
Okay, so I'll finish then.
Yes.
Yeah, we wanna schedule, and we really, really like to see the construction manager...
Not really like, we demand.
We did, well, we demand, okay, we would like, well, we don't know that person's schedule, but it would be good to see him at either the work session or actually at the vote or whatever, but I think we need to see that person as well, because they're a big part of how the site plan is handled.
Okay.
Especially if we're doing site plans in pieces, which we normally don't do. And that's what I'm saying, I think this is part of the problem, because this is a city and school project on our land, it's our stuff, we're, we're doing things we normally wouldn't do. We would normally never let a developer have a site plan in pieces.
Ever.
So, we've allowed them to do this, and we need to make sure it's managed.
All right, so then on July 1st, we'll also have a work session on the comprehensive plan chapter, demographics and housing. There was a work session with council tonight on those, so it's coming to us on July 1. Then the housing commission will have additional meeting, they saw it in May and has had a chance to comment for the last sixty days, and then it'll be back to us for public hearing and action on July 15th.
Yeah, the community meeting for that, unfortunately, did not have a lot of community, it was a lot of people from boards and commissions and city council and staff, but there was some really good discussion there, and so hopefully that information was used.
That was this past Saturday, so...
Yeah.
And then the community profile has been completed for 2018 and is now available. It, you know, helps track our progress towards the city's 2040 vision, and also provides indicators for each of the core values of the vision chapter, and so that's now available, and that was attached as part of your...
Can I comment, just real quick on that?
Yes.
I looked at it real quick, and the indicator on greenhouse gas emissions was missing.
Okay.
So, that's one of the indicators that was included up front when we set this up, so I think it needs to, I don't know if there's, if it's in final, final form, or if we have a chance to catch glitches like that, but I think that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, where was it in here? Because I saw some stuff...
They didn't do it, they just had a couple sentences on energy, which talked about replacing